Cory.
Well.
You love the morning?
Yes.
I sent out the engineer of Degas yesterday afternoon to work. We're called Rock, Layton, and we ran two mortar graters on the Stanton Road. Shouldered yesterday, two passes up and back twice. And rode, rode the rock in up against the slab as we were also cutting trees and brush on G Avenue. We'll be finishing that up this week. And then doing some other tree and brush cleanup, wrapping up what we got started in various locations. Maybe got one more job to start. And of course, we'll move into pipe work. We have a couple of tens back out of the shop. In Omaha, back to us. I noticed they're pulling off, no equipment off, some of the trucks. Pulled off a wing off a mortar grater last week. And there was a tailgate sander and a, and a wing off a truck laying in the shop today. Continue with that, probably one, one wing on a mortar grater in the north park, one in the south park. For another couple of weeks. Although the ditches are not full of snow, then we may get a snow yet, or historically, there's still an opportunity or possibility of snow in April or May, but it'll go way fast. So we're moving away from winter operations to the normal spring work. The mortar tractors are being prepped, one's all ready to go. One needs some parts, one needs some, just some blades on the bushel. And we're gonna bring in chips for the spray protector. You may have seen on KMA, a nice little article about the setting of the beams last Wednesday. That was a little on the muddy side, but they persevered there despite that. So we're making suitable progress along there as, according to his schedule, we're, we're right on that. Right now, they're forming the deck, they took beam shots to make sure the, the haunches are right, the beams. There's no adjustment to the deck elevations, so we're forming the deck, doing the sides and the ends. Place the rebar and then the concrete, which would be another major step. And we would anticipate forming the deck mid-April, the latter part of April. You know, this, it's only a hundred and ten foot long. Significantly smaller than the bridges we've done in the previous years. That were three hundred and fifty-nine foot and four hundred and nine foot, four hundred and fourteen foot long. So this will, it'll seem to go faster. We're doing some training of staff, of surveyors, attending online classes or lectures about contract administration. He's been doing, he's been doing the practical work of that with Randy, with the diggers. Taking that from the DOD. Project developments continue with B sixty-one, it brings down the southeast corner and working on the HMA resourcing for the Stanton Road project. Got a couple of lettings coming up in April, the local rock haul. Targeted local roads will be the eighth of May, or the eighth of April. And then the local pipe jobs, a week behind that, will, the bids will get delivered to the engineering office. And then we'll take them over to the auditor's office for opening, and then bring them to the board the next Tuesday. Which I believe it'll be the evening meeting on the thirteenth. If my, on that local rock anyway.
Sure, that's, and that'll be a time to talk about, right, the plan.
Program. I, I did run across several aerial shots, comparison of the EWP. I'm, I'm not quite done with the EWP beating on that board. But although we are getting all the paperwork done, the money's back. I, I guess I don't know exactly the source of these photographs. And they're not a hundred percent of our projects are out there. But I do have interesting before and aftershocks of our EWP work. And no, no. The, the location of these, while, while doing that, do you have any questions, any questions?
I had Sam Woodruff from Shambo calling this morning. And he is curious about tubes on the edge of Shambo where they butt up against, if there was against a county road. Who's responsible at one that's pretty bad? It's on West Street and Old Highway Avenue. I didn't drive by that this morning on the way up there, but.
So this is in the city of Shambo?
Well, it's on the edge, where the edge comes up, I guess. So he's curious if any of those sort of council or it's other town, if he didn't know where to go about fixing that tube. He said he reached out to the office to just.
Right, we have that activity.
Yeah, I just, I, what am I asking?
I'm trying to remember, we've talked from down there. Maybe the clerk called me and told me had to have a, a name and a number for the streets guy.
Just to figure it out.
Any questions out?
I don't either, JD.
So. Previous, or existing conditions are on the right, and the new project is on the left. Perhaps taken by a drone. Anyway, pretty, pretty good looking photos. Excellent. So you showed up in an email box? The, the surveyor brought him down from somewhere. So I don't know if this is the DNR, John Thomas wasn't aware of him. He's seven and a half. If he would have interest in this. So in some cases, the, you know, prior condition, it looks pretty ugly. At least as a, this photograph of all, I mean, the big structure, the whole circuit. You have a little, a little sliding of the bank on Site Eight, about a hundred and sixtieth street. You have to, you have to do something like that. It's a, you know, well off the right of the, hard of, it's gonna interfere with the street while pushing against the other bank. You know, so when it's driving out, if there's a ball or something out, we're gonna have to deal with that or do something in there. Anything else for me?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we can look at claims when we get to the, get a little time to eight fifty. Actually. Copy for you. We got that electronically?
Oh, yes. Yep. Again, I made sure that John had this. And that's what they've been working on, but he said, so.
That's what they've been working on.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
There you go, there you go.
Do you need these now?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Alan, he got signed, I apologize. Here is the tax abatement information. It's all relevant to the tax. Thank you. Did, did everybody get a chance to sign in over here, here in the room? Please do. Thank you.
This audio question, I'll join without audio on the computer. First time's asking that.
Yeah, that's.
All right, it didn't say fifty, if you had a chance to look at that.
Okay.
All right, on the agenda is to discuss and approve taxes, twelve oh seven, West Valley and Shenandoah. It was, uh, thank you Cory, there's a location of the property in question. Zoom in a little bit. So does anybody have any questions or a motion would be in order?
I'd make a motion to approve the tax abatement for twelve oh seven, West Valley Avenue in the city of Shenandoah, resolution number twenty-three two oh two one.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes, any other discussion? The, uh, uh, let's see. Taxes is entered on this, this will be filed downstairs if anybody wants to look at taxes, ninety-two dollars plus penalty and interest. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, pass this round to sign.
There you go. That's getting interesting.
Anybody got a good three minute story? We got three minutes before we go to the next slide.
Well, yeah, we had to wait for a month.
Well, we're, we're trying to, John, just in case there's somebody online that's wanting to join us at that time. Hopefully, if there's something of interest on the agenda, they would join, I've been a little too early. As you leave the courthouse today, if you want to stop, and wish Steve Stribling well, Steve retiring after sixteen years. He's down in the treasurer's office. Might have passed or failed you on a driver's test over the years.
You want to put these pictures in that binder, would you please, with, with, okay, no?
Yeah, if we could.
Yeah, they're kind of big, aren't they? Hold on, I'll hold a whole bunch of them, okay. A whole bunch, one side and follow it. You could open it up.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, that's pretty good, pretty good before and after.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's amazing, isn't it? I'm up above how that looks, okay.
Is that number eight on there?
That's ten.
Ten.
That's two. One, four, and that's.
So he, I didn't see that area that he was talking about, so I didn't think we had a picture.
Yeah, I'll give him a picture of it, yeah.
All right, it is eight fifty-five, so we can continue now. On our agenda is to discuss and approve Board of Health applications. We have a vacancy in the Page County Board of Health. Chad T. Meyer stepped down prior to his appointment. I'm not sure, I don't have my book, let's see, when does this appointment go to? Do you have yours, Alan?
Yep.
Hang on, a second. I think his went through the end of twenty-two, don't forget me on that. Uh, yes, twenty-two, yeah. So we're appointing to fill a vacancy, and we have two applications. One that came in fresh, one that we retained. I called, back in December, we had a couple of applicants for an opening. And at any rate, I called Wendy Meyer and asked if she wanted her application to be put back in for consideration. She said yes, so we have hers and Lori Gibson, both look to be very good applications. So is there any discussion, comments?
Want to make a motion on this, or is that not the time for that?
Uh, yeah, we can, sure, yeah, now's the time for a motion.
I think I, I've got two good ones here, but I'd make a motion based on the, the application here to put Wendy Meyer in the position of Public Health Board.
Okay, we have a motion for Wendy Meyer, do I hear a second? I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Holmes, second by Armstrong. Okay, discussion. I think, I've known Wendy a long, long time, one concern I, I have about that is that the state encourages us on these boards to be, A, gender balanced, and B, we've tried internally to do geographic balance because of the competition between Shenandoah and Clarendon. And so we're losing a Shenandoah seat member. So I think for me, that's one consideration.
I don't know, the reason I nominated her here for this, was just a very deep resume and what I would do for having her input on the board, I think would be good. From lab work to, you know, doctor chiropractor, a long, long time. I think it's good for somebody with that deep a credentials wants to serve on the board.
I think credentials of Lori Gibson are very strong too, plus the grant writing experience here, I think might be helpful for our board.
What is her medical background? I was trying to understand.
She had no medical background that I'm aware of, but we have a lot of medical background. Historically, if you look since the formation of public health boards in the late eighteen hundreds, there needs to be a medical director, but we've had individuals on the Board of Public Health over the years that come from a variety of walks of life.
Yeah, the last three would have, I don't believe, would have had any medical background. Lori has a, a long time relationship with the Childcare Center in Shenandoah. I know that she's got a very good working relationship with her board, from my knowledge, over there. And she does have exceptional knowledge of working with children and safety and concerns through that avenue of health also, so.
So any other discussion? I mean, I think they're both really good candidates, so. I'm sensitive to the, to the gender, the geographic as well. So we have a motion on the floor, go, go ahead.
No. I'd consider geographic in, in January, with, with Heather Bay, not being in Page County. I think geographic matters, but again, I think there'll probably be another opening in the future too, so. Anyway, I, I really think that they're both good. I know probably, I work with kids, Wendy works with kids chiropractor every day and night, so. That's all, that's all I want to add to this, I guess.
Okay. Well, we've got a motion on the floor for Wendy Meyer as the appointment to fill the vacancy left by Chad T. Meyer through the end of twenty-twenty-two. Let's roll call that, please, Christie.
Yes.
No.
No. Do I have a motion to, uh?
I'll make a motion to appoint Lori Gibson to the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second, motion and a second, any other discussion? You know, the other, the other thing I would say about Wendy, we had, we've been advertising the, the opening. And the deadline was four o'clock on Friday, we had not heard from Wendy, Wendy. About three thirty, I called her, and I said, Wendy, would you like to have your name back? She says, oh, I guess, put me back in, so.
I stopped and talked to her yesterday, and she was under the presumption that she'd remained on the list for a year. You don't have to reapply, you're on there for years, is that correct?
That is correct.
So not really, there wasn't a deadline for her, just have that corrected. And, and she was very happy to serve, and, and, I hope she gets a chance in the future.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for Lori Gibson, would you like to roll call, please?
I'm gonna vote no based on credentials, based on the rest.
Yes. Yes. All right. While we wait the nine-ten period, I had a call from an architectural firm in St. Joseph that builds jails, and they wanted to know if they could present to us. It's GGA.
They actually build them?
They're, well, they don't do that, no, they don't.
The same kind of?
Yeah, the same kind of, an architectural planner.
Advisory planner, yeah.
Consultant. They, what's it called, GGA? Uh, yeah, let me double-check, make sure I said that right. They do have some Iowa experience, I scoped them out. They are in Woodbury County, and they might have partnered, because I thought that the Woodbury County facility was done recently by the Sandals Group, but maybe they partnered as the architect on that, GGA. Did you find him? Did I say?
GGA partners.
GGA.
Oh, no, that's not it. Sorry, that's golf course. Hopefully, that's not.
Okay. Yeah, Goldberg Group Architects.
Goldberg Group.
Yeah, St. Joe, Kansas City. So anyway, the question is, they'd, they'd like to come make a presentation. The contract that we would look at with any of those companies, as a service contract, would not fall under an RFP or bid requirement, so it's your pleasure if you want to listen to another, another one.
Little layer, anything?
Okay? You're okay with that?
Yes.
All right. We'll try to get them on the agenda here as soon as we can.
Okay. How soon are we going to get Mr. Micah's request about cemeteries, and do we need to?
I asked him if he could present next, next, next week.
I just wondered if we needed to do any pre-talking to any of the cemetery boards, because that's kind of.
It's a township issue, so we need to dig up the.
I'd talk to him, and I, I don't know, we'll rule that on our township. We take care of a couple cemeteries.
And that's.
And have hired some people to do that sort of thing.
Right, and that's kind of the way they are in all the townships. Now, there are a few exceptions where they've been a little lax, and the neighbors end up doing it, but.
Does the county have any cemeteries they're in charge of?
No, not on, not on townships. And then, I'm not quite sure of the arrangement of the Clarendon City Cemetery. I, I don't know if our township contributes to that or not.
No.
I need to call Gary, but.
Shenandoah takes care of theirs through City Hall, everything.
Right, and I think.
But I don't know if there's any dollars that come in from anybody else, so.
But depending on, I told him that depending on what they ask, you know, I mean, it looked to me like we're not talking a lot about.
No.
So I'm, I'm hoping maybe our county employees will consider taking it on as a personal project, where we could all contribute some dollars and see what happens. But no, I told him next week, and that'll give him some time. He can set a nice list over, what he needs.
Interesting, interesting concept, a good project.
Mm-hmm.
The COVID money that's going to come, is the Department of Conservation part of that, too? Can I receive part of that or not?
I think yes, I mean, if it's, it's, yeah.
It's one of those areas that we're looking at, but we're still waiting, they still have not seen any guidelines, exact guidelines.
Well, Mark said that meeting on Saturday was interesting, you know, the one-time stuff and the best, of course.
Right.
I hadn't thought about that. If I know what their rules are going to be, which would be interesting.
I encourage John Schwab to put together some ideas on some infrastructure.
I had an idea I was thinking about after going to a meeting a month ago, I was not talking about, but I didn't know if I could.
So.
Part of it or not.
You'll probably hear from the committee, probably.
Honored, yeah, we're going to meet again on the twelfth and then the thirteenth, so if you've got something, Jacob.
Well, can we do that as just part of a meeting, because we can also maybe just listen to?
Well, we're going to listen to their recommendations, we'll have a big discussion about.
I mean, there's, what they're going to bring us, there's nothing planned, so it's just a recommendation, so.
Yeah, we aren't going to start anything until it comes in front of the board, anyway, so. And we probably aren't going to be able to do a whole lot until the money's here, and until we know what all the rules are, so you don't, because it, as we've been hearing, if we spend the money and it's in the wrong spot, then it comes back out of the general budget, so we don't want to do that, so.
I think everybody's trying to figure out what the rules are going to be, and I was at a mental health meeting yesterday, there's some thought that some of this additional money that was sent to the state is, again, going to be carved out to the mental health regions, and there's no, nobody has any clarification on it right now.
Who handed down those rules? Are they federal rules? I guess they'd be federal dollars.
Well, the, yeah, the Department of Treasury is monitoring who we will report to directly through the Treasury Department, and so the rules are established by them. All right, it is nine-ten, and on the agenda, discuss and approve a meeting, public meeting request from Jake and Ann Morse. I assume this is Jake and Ann back here. So you would send an email to all three of us, and then follow it up with a letter, and
they want to come up with a?
Yeah, if you want to come up, if you want to even kind of tell us what you're looking at, we'll listen.
I'm Annie, this is my husband Jake. We live two miles, let's call it spring. We actually found it on the radio that we were on today's agenda, so we are here because we are Page County property owners, more concerned about the fifteen-hundred-foot setback from property, from the actual foundation of your house, from a non-participating resident. I'm sure you looked this up, and you see that we're small landowners, because we have like two-point-seven-five acres, but the hundred-and-fifty acres around us are Jake's parents. They're to the north-south and east of us, so we're worried about the land to the west of us. The land's been in Jake's family for a hundred-and-twenty years, and that's the reason we built there. We're here representing the Page County taxpayers who live in the country. We're not any less important than the residents or businesses in town, and we're asking for a public meeting on the wind turbines in Page County. We're, we're concerned about the setback.
Okay, appreciate that. Well, putting on, glad you came, didn't mean to exclude you by not letting you know. We, we were going to, we had a request from you that we were going to consider, because it was our understanding, you were asking us to create a date, a time for a public meeting, and that's what we were to consider here today, so thanks for coming, but.
We didn't know if it would be considered if we weren't here.
Okay, sure, sure. Well, as I, as I told you guys, and I don't know how anybody else feels to this point, I mean, I understand you have concerns, you stated those concerns. I would, personally, at this point, we don't have a project in front of us. We have two wind companies that are acquiring land, as we speak, probably, trying to put a project together. We don't have a project. Back a year and a half ago, we created a, an ordinance that we believe was fair to all, both participants and non-participants, would allow wind. We had an ordinance on the books back in ninety-nine that was very unfriendly to people who wanted. It was, it protected people who didn't want them, because nothing would get built under that ordinance. So we created an ordinance that we felt was respectable to both sides. We had two public meetings. We've heard nothing back from the wind companies in terms of a project. We had requests here, I don't know, last fall, for meteorological towers, which is part of their study on the viability of whether projects can indeed work in Page County. We approved, I think, a total of four meteorological towers, three for Tanasco, one for Inverge, which is the project developer in your neck of the woods. And we've heard nothing back from them in terms of, you know, are you going to bring a project? Because what, what steps would be is, they would bring a project to this board for approval. And at that time, to my way of thinking, that's a more relevant time to have a public meeting.
In my opinion, I feel like that would be too late. If they're bringing a project to you, and we have agreed in setbacks that are friendly to the non-participants, I feel like that would be too late.
And they're already here, we see them.
Yeah, they're, they're on the phone, they're not going to.
No, I know they're here, but we don't have, yeah, they're, they're acting, they're, they're trying to sign up land, they're looking at birds, they're checking wind on their instruments. I know they're here.
But I feel like if we wait until they, they bring a project to you, that would be too late for the non-participants.
So you're, you're, but your biggest concern is setbacks, is what you've drawn?
Yeah, because I mean, from our garage, because we're on the corner of this family farm, from our garage, there could be a wind turbine fifteen-hundred feet straight up from our garage.
Which could also affect the right of the shop, or we're out of the, it was a.
And that's our concern.
Well, I can, I can tell you, I'll tell you straight up, I'm, I'm comfortable with the setback. I won't, you're going to have a hard, you're going to have to present information that I've not read or seen, that, for me to change the setback.
We could tell them you're going to do that.
Well, I would like to see, I've seen a ton of information, the board's seen a ton of information, if there's something new, I'd certainly take a look at.
I've said over and over and over and over again, whatever is safe, if you think fifteen-hundred feet is adequate, right? I mean, you, by the study you've done right now.
Fifteen-hundred is.
And that's fine, and that's what the board's agreed on last year, whenever, your ordinance, but that's measured from the foundation, even. So if that's the distance that you feel, or is, or did feel it was safe, I don't understand why it's measured from the foundation and not the property line. I've exhausted that, but I, if that is what's deemed to be safe, why are we not measuring from the property line? That wouldn't even gain them very many feet, even, but still.
It would be, but.
But it would still be the principle of the matter.
Yeah, and I think, feel like it's protecting the property of non-participating landowners.
And also, the height of a wind turbine greatly changes, so I've read other county said all things would be good for a discussion, other county ordinances that base it on times the height. So if you have one six-hundred-foot tall, different than one four-hundred-foot tall. A blanket number is kind of a, maybe that needs to be addressed a little bit, because taller down, Missouri, where my folks are, they're building turbines six-hundred-and-fifty foot tall right now. The ones north of Claremont are five-hundred-foot tall, so you have some differences here, and the older ones here are three-hundred-foot tall.
And there are ordinances that are like three times.
Three times height, there's things of that nature.
Things like that.
Sure, and again, to my point, that until we have a project, you say it's too late. The project, they're not going to bring us a project, we're going to, we're going to say, well, here's, we're going to need to look at the project. They will present a project to us, I assume electronically, saying we want to get on your agenda. At that point, I mean, we don't know if they're building a six-hundred-foot tower, we don't know if it's five-hundred-foot tower, so to your point, the setbacks and the distances based on, on that, until we have that data, there, there's really, we could, we could talk about what ifs all day, but we don't have any, any project here in front of us. Does that make sense?
It is, but I think it's very conceivable to change the ordinance to a property line versus a foundation.
No, it's not, it, it's not, young lady, because there's not a property line, there's not an active wind project in Iowa where the setback is tied to the property line. There's not an actively developed wind farm in Iowa tied to the property line. There are setbacks tied to the property line that are basically moratoriums, because the wind companies, the way land is laid out in Iowa, can't, can't do that.
We, we have a setback from the property line right now, if there's not a house, it's just one-point-one times the height.
True, that is, that is.
So we do have, and all of them have that, it's just, that basically acknowledges that you're using your neighbor's property for your investment, because if you think the fifteen-hundred feet is fair for my home, then you're taking nine-hundred feet, basically, to him and I, the turbine from your neighbor, to get your investment built, if you can't, if you put it that close to them.
But I, I challenge you, I mean, if you can find, if you can find where there is an active wind farm with a setback to the property line, I can't find it. I'm not saying it's not out there, but I don't believe it would be out there, okay?
How big is that? We, we have a setback, property line, I mean, you mean.
But I mean, you're, you're, you're asking for the fifteen-hundred feet instead of the foundation to be, so whatever that number is, fifteen-hundred, seventeen-hundred.
Three times height, two times height, whatever.
To the property line. That property line language in the ordinance is based on the height of the wind tower, so that if it were to fall, if the thing were to collapse, it direction, tear it down, then it wouldn't fall on your property. That's the one-point-one language in the wind tower.
Then, you know, why wouldn't they, would it just be one-point-one from a foundation, then? Why is the fifteen-hundred feet exist? It's, in their contract, it lists noise, vibration, electromagnetic, it lists all that in their contract, so that's why it's there. This is all about us having a meeting. I think we're here to sit and listen, we're going to listen to the jail builder, which is good to learn. I'm all in favor of sitting and listening to another meeting.
Okay.
Let everybody talk. We, we've had, to, to my knowledge, the counties put on two after the ordinance was passed, two public meetings put on by us, one county-sponsored per wind meeting. That's the three that have taken, taken place by the board, since the ordinance. So I'm, I'm here to listen.
Well, I'm here to listen, too, but I'm not, until we get a project, I, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to vote for a public meeting until we know what the project is, and I can assure you that once we get a project, we're not going to get the project and say, let's vote real quick before we have a public meeting. I'm not going to do that. I'll have a public meeting, and we'll, we'll map it out. But right now, it's, we've got lots of stuff to do, don't even have a project, we could spend a lot of time, one evening, talking about this setback, that setback, it might be a six-hundred-foot tower that doesn't relate to have that conversation.
Right, if it's just based on a, a, a variable like one-point-one, or three-point, or whatever, then it wouldn't matter how tall it was, you're just making it according to, if it's two-hundred-foot tall, it don't have to be two-hundred, by the way. It'd be a variable, which is what a lot of counties do, it wouldn't matter, it wouldn't matter what they came with, they came with five-hundred feet, it'd be fifteen-hundred.
I, I would encourage you to talk with our county attorney about changing any ordinance at this point without any.
Without a project?
Huh?
Is that what makes it different? I don't know. So if you have a project, it's a difference to change.
If you have, if you have wind contracts with landowners, that is based on our wind ordinance, this is what's happening in Madison County, this is why that's such a.
Well, if anybody would, would come against a county trying to protect its residents, that, that corporation would not be friendly, corporation that went into the county, in my opinion.
It's not.
We weren't doing this for profit, or like, we picked another company over you, and we're going to cheat you, this is to try to keep people safe and healthy on their property.
Okay.
In my opinion, I, I'm open to listen now and then, and I do think we should do it when there's one presented also, I agree with you there.
And, and as I offered, you guys electronically an email, give me your specific questions, let me know what your questions are, I'd be glad to answer any question based on the knowledge base that I have.
We've watched the video.
Huh?
We watched the video of the town hall.
Okay.
We've watched it.
Okay.
It sounded very much like they're trying to sell the county the wind turbines, and I agree, it's a great program, it's great, but I want to protect us and our participation.
Understand, and that was a, that was a point of our ordinance, to try to protect everybody the best we could, and allow it to happen, give people rights on both sides, and certainly, the landowners that want to participate have rights, too, so.
I agree, agree. All right, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. So let's, let's take a, is there a motion to have a public meeting?
I motion we have a public meeting to discuss it. I'm making a night meeting in the future, sometime.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, so I'm not against a public meeting, but I want a project first. I don't want to have, I don't want to have a public meeting until we. first, I don't want to have, I don't want to have a public meeting until we have a project, that's my.
My, my main reason for wanting maybe an additional one is, well, I've listed ones we've had, and would be, there's, there's people like Jake here and his wife that they didn't know about this, and I think if people see bird watchers and it becomes a kind of a, a new thing, when it's in your, when it's in your yard, all of a sudden, you start looking into it and figure out you missed something, happened a year ago, and those people might not have, might want their concerns heard. I think it's okay.
Chuck, I know you don't like to interrupt, don't like.
No, well, it's not, no, 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 you can't, this is not a public discussion.
I understand that, but can I just make one comment, please?
During the comment period, Judy?
No, no, but see, this is the problem, everything on your agenda always says discuss and approve, and then you have public comment. Well, what good is public comment after you've approved?
Well, that's just how it is, it's working, I see. So anyway, thank you for your comment.
I agree.
Okay, we're going to mute everybody, or we will, Corey, can I get this zoomed back up? I can't see it here. Not sure what I. You on this one? Oh, right there, okay, thank you. All right, there we go. All right, okay, so we have a motion on the floor to hold a public meeting, was that the motion? And a second?
I, I was going to say, my second would be with the amendment of, and maybe we need to vote first, but I think that it needs to be after we've had, if there's going to be a plan in the county. I'm not sure, any advantages after having the two main town hall meetings that we had, what advantage we'd have of having more.
I just think new people, they have no idea, or they've seen a bird watcher in their yard, they're concerned, and they want to be heard.
Yeah, but I think any of them can, are more than willing to invite, we can visit all we want, we can share the data, we can share all the emails. Jacob, we, we've got so much information to both sides, been having meetings through public health, I'm not sure, another meeting, when we're not, I can't, I can't make any decision on the ordinance until I see if there's going to be a plan, and knowing what the plan is, and to see where they're going to be, and how it's going to affect people. I don't see a need, from what the research I did when, during the whole process, I feel that the board made a, a middle-of-the-road, good decision, and I, I'm not going to want to change anything until we see something that's happening.
So if we had a public meeting when there was a wind project on the table, if they're not closer than 1,500 feet to the foundation, you would not change your mind anyway, just listening to people who are upset.
Yeah.
About their home being so close to a wind turbine.
Well, it's hard to predict how you would vote until you get.
Yes, I, yeah, I'm not.
I, I would hopefully be open to looking at the situation at the time, with real people standing there and real threat.
My, my decision on how I voted, Jacob, was based on looking at all the other area counties to see how they had prescribed to do things, what the least resistance and yet the most positive results, if it was going to happen, and then at some point in time, there may be changes can be made, but until there's something out there, I don't know what changes to make, so.
I agree with that, my concern is, like I said, they're changing, so maybe these counties might seem to do a times the height would be more protect people, because generally a turbine company would have a bigger setback for taller wind turbine, we're just making sure they do. That would be something that is not in our current ordinance, that would be a protective action, that wouldn't really, would just make sure they're honest, basically.
Would you, would you commit to spending some time this week with, with our legal counsel, talk about ordinances and how they're changed?
Yeah.
And the impact of that?
Yeah, I mean, I hope we didn't pass an ordinance that can never be changed.
Please visit with Carl.
Yeah.
Please. All right, we have a motion, and it's to.
Can I, I'm not sure if I can make an amendment on his motion.
No, we, we need to vote on, so the, the motion on the floor is to have a public hearing.
Maybe, and I'd like to add with Carl here, he can give us a dissertation, and I'll add that to my motion, to tell us, let, let, while we've opened up, if I, maybe that's the wrong way to do it, I'm just.
Let, let, we've got a motion to have a, and, and you wanted one.
And one of the evening meetings, you can pick this the next time or something.
Okay, so the motion is to have an immediate pre-project wind discussion, correct?
And that's what the second is.
Okay, so, let's roll call that, please. Yes.
No.
No. Now, if we could have a motion to commit to a public meeting once we have a project.
I'll make a motion that we have a public meeting once a project has been presented, and we also have legal counsel at that meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could you roll call that, please? Pardon me? Oh, sure.
We're going too fast. We're slow for a long time, let me get faster.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Very good, so now it is public comment time. So Judy, let me ask you this, if, would, would, if we had our public comment to begin the meeting, would that help you feel like you have more input? Because I'm open to that.
Now, I was going to say, the city council does that, I'm on Shandell, I'm beginning.
That makes sense, the talk before we decide.
Yeah, and after, sure. But the way the agenda's set up, Judy, that's how we legally need to do it, and that's the way it's been there for a while, but would that help you, Judy, are you back on? Would that?
I am back, I am back on, but what, I mean, could you discuss it one week and vote the next, or anything to, so that you, because, I mean, public comment beforehand doesn't do any good if we don't know what you're, what you're going to discuss.
Well, in, in the case of today, you, you have the agenda, and clearly you joined because you saw the nine ten, if the public comment period was, say, after the pledge of allegiance, would that help you feel like your input was heard?
Yeah, because I feel like this, we still do live in a democracy, and I think people should be able to discuss with you or have comments about it.
Well, we, I think it's pretty evident, we live in a democracy, we're the.
Oh, I don't know about that.
You want, huh? I mean, we're voting, everybody's voting.
Yeah.
What's on Democratic, I thought I would ask.
Well.
But anyway.
I, I like the idea of maybe having a public comment at the very beginning.
Okay.
And.
Let's put that, do we have to make an action to do that, or can we just do?
No, we can just do that.
Yeah, and then.
Sorry, David.
That way, if there's anything on the agenda, if anybody wants to speak on, they can.
Before we have a, sure. Okay, I'm good with that. Okay, makes sense. Any other public comment? Yes, sir, come on up.
I'm over at a local hotel here, and over a year ago, there was a lady state that quite took time, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, she was an abstract, and she told me that she spent all day up here at the courthouse rewriting abstracts of wind turbines. So why would you rewrite an abstract if there is no project claimed?
Can't answer that, I don't know, what's your name, by the way?
Mike Howard.
Okay, I'll ask, I, I mean, to use the term on rewriting abstracts.
She was an abstract, that was her business.
I don't, I'll be honest with you, I don't understand how work in the recorder's office, you know, what, what happens sequentially or.
I know they researched, they researched abstracts, but as far as rewriting, I don't know.
I don't know that she rewrote, she's working on abstracts.
Yeah, 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 she did a lot of research.
Yeah, I don't think she has the authority to rewrite, that's why I was asking, I, I think that they, they look at abstracts for legal definitions of where, where everything is located, how it was recorded, enheasements on property, those kinds of things, it's a, it's more of a research function, I don't think she's altering anything.
I, I didn't, she wasn't real open about what she was talking about, so I didn't really push it. I just wondered if they were redoing abstracts, you know, to allow.
You know, Mike, I'm going to do the same thing, I'd encourage you to do it, when, when you exit, stop in Brenda's office and ask her if, when abstracters here, if they have any ability to rewrite, or if they're just gathering information, just to make sure, because I, that's news to me. Okay, all right, thank you.
James Stinson, in your research, have you looked at abstracts that are on file in the recorder's office now? I've spent tons of hours looking, doing that. The abstracts are rewritten because now the company has the right or has an owning in those persons that have signed up with them, their abstract. How you don't know that worries me.
Well, I, there's a lot.
That's a big part of what's going on. They now have control over all those lands that people have signed up.
Yeah, so I, that, that part I understood.
Well, that's.
The rewriting part, I wasn't sure what that meant, that term that you used, so I apologize if I.
The abstract is written before they signed up with the main turbine.
They have to, you know, after they've met with the farm owners, they do the abstract work, they want to make sure that everything is done correctly, they have to research all the history all the way back to make sure there aren't any issues out there that would cause of an issue farther down the road, but just because they have met with farmers and have gotten certain amounts of land and signed, doesn't mean that there's a project. They still have to have so many acres, they still have to have so many farms, they still have to have so many areas within the county for either of the projects to ever be done, so.
But they do, they're now in charge of those people's land.
Well, the person has given them the right to.
Right.
Yes, and it's no different than if I were to give the right to mine to be.
Hunt.
Oil well, or a hunt, or whatever, and that's just part of, yes.
And that's, I think, a 40-year signature.
Yeah, I, I believe you.
So that's a done, they, they have a say over that land now.
Right.
And the people that signed it can't get back out of it.
Well, that was their choice, I would assume.
Right, and, and a certain amount are uninformed, they, they, oh, we can't get out of this, oh, so, I'm not sure about all your research, I'm kind of worried.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, this, I do.
Yeah, okay.
Um, this is Ashley Yerkowski, first off, I have a question, you saying waiting to have a meeting for your, to make sure there's a project actually on the ground, then are you saying all the people that are signing up right now under the current ordinance that you have, that you are capable of going in and changing the ordinance, and all them people that have already signed up, will they have to follow your old ordinance or a new ordinance if you were to change it, or legally, I mean, can you even do that?
I'm going to refer you to Carl Songson, our county attorney, for that question, Ashley.
Okay, I guess that's a concern, and then Chuck, you said that it was a 99 ordinance, it actually was a 97 ordinance, and I have looked into that in a very further detail, and it actually, it did protect both sides of the people that either wanted wind turbines or didn't want wind turbines, because what it allowed was every project would have to have a public meeting with the neighbors there to discuss what was happening around them, no different than what happened with the landfill here just last week, and the zoning board on that. I also have a few other, I, that was my question, I would like to read something. So, "Living in Page County my whole life and attending plus calling into meetings over the last year does nothing but throw up red flags, week after week for me. You guys assure us that you are leaders and need to set the example week after week. When I watch these meetings, it just keeps throwing concerns, like you guys giving yourself a 4% raise, your reasons like I'm selfish, I work overtime, I get called a liar and screamed at. Me being a business owner in this town and shut up because of COVID, my taxes are going up, all to help pay your salary." I would say that this is not very business savvy of you individuals as leaders of the county. I also watched last week, and a supervisor was raising his tone about got-you moments. What you consider is a got-you moment, I would consider as facts being presented, and anybody can go to Zoom video and see that for themselves. Also, talking to a local internet provider employee, it should be extremely capable for the courthouse to download these Zoom meetings without hindering internet speed at the courthouse or any departments. Also, by watching the meeting last week, I was not impressed by the public comments that brought to my attention that one of our leaders was labeling a public party as radicals. When this makes up the majority of the county, how sad. It is your right to change political parties, but not your right to label other people's beliefs as a leader of the county. And I would also say with the wind turbine stuff, I, I mean, you guys had people fill that courthouse with concerns, and I just know that you take an oath to protect the health and well-being of the citizens of this county, and it just seems like that is your absolute last priority, that we are protecting multi-million, billion air companies to come into the county and take over our citizens, and why we are waiting until it's too late to protect our citizens in this county is beyond me. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Ashley.
Any other public comment? All right, hearing none, we have the minutes in front of us from last week.
I had one, is it too late?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, I had one, and I couldn't get my phone unmuted, is it too late for a public comment?
Oh, what's your name, please?
Tracy Grossini.
Okay.
I just had a question, just wanted to clarify something from my own thought process. Mr. Morris, you said that, let me get this straight, there would be no need to have a public meeting and change the ordinance until after a project was presented, is that correct?
What I, what I tried to convey was that I see no need for a public meeting until we have a project in front of us, I believe that's what I, that's what I tried to say anyway, Tracy, because we don't have any factual information about any area that's being potentially developed, or the size or magnitude of that project.
I guess I would have a comment, if possible, definitely.
Sure, thank you.
John Stimson, here in East River Township, trying to get my thoughts together. We know that the, the turbine, turbine project is ongoing. Past history shows, past experience shows that they'll, that they continue to work, they continue to sell, they continue to get names on contracts, once that name is on a contract, it's too late for that person to change their mind, as I understand. And so, the purpose of a public meeting would be to, for transparency, to get as much information out there as possible, I know for you folks, for, and for someone like us, we've been, had, had, been a part of this turmoil for a couple of years now, and it seems like oh. part of this turmoil for a couple of years now and it seems like old business, but, but in, in reality, there's a lot of people out there still pretty uninformed. And, and, uh, money is a big issue for all of us, of course. But when a, when a company comes and says, you know, $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 a year, th- then that pretty much blinds a lot of us. And, and, uh, there's, there's been a lot of, personally, you know, from, uh, from personal testimony, there's been a, a lot of people who have regretted signing that ma, their name on that contract. It's too late, there's nothing you can do. And so I think as, as a public official, we should do all we can to, or that you as a board should do all you can. You know, if you're gonna make an error, make an error on the side of transparency, you know, though, I, I feel like for those, some of us, the board has, as a whole, has, has, uh, been proactive for, I, I don't, I know you're not gonna accept this, but been more proactive for the turbine companies trying to get a foothold here than you have for the cit, concerned citizens. And, and I'm sure that there's a lot of folks out there that, as you said, there's some folks out there that want the turbines, want that money, and, but they don't want to make a public stand. Well, that's politics, folks. If, if you don't want to make a public, if you, if you want to take a stand and you're gonna impose upon the, the county, uh, this project that is gonna be here for, um, you know, 40, 50 years and change our lifestyle here, then you better be able to take a, a public stand. That's, that's, that's what leadership is, that's politics. For, for the citizen who stands up and voices concern, I would hope that you would give more credibility to that than, than, than to, than for the individual that won't, doesn't have the, the fortitude to stand up and make a stand, you know, on the opposing argument. And man, you know, I, I guess the first public meeting we had, there was one or two people that took, stood up and spoke in favor. And maybe the second one, there was a couple as well, but, but the, the, the predominant voice that you've heard is a concern that, you know, to try to protect the small landowner, the, the small acreage, uh, make, keep public, or Page County, a county that's friendly and inviting to young families coming in. And, and for you to sit there and, and deny that there's any issue, that, that, that these things, that don't, don't happen, that property value does not drop, that, that people move as a result of a turbine being too close, means that, that you are, you're not, uh, truly, uh, in, in a neutral position on this. You're, you're, you're trying to find reasons and arguments, you know, to, to bring the turbines in because of the tax money. So, again, just, I'll repeat one thing. I think air, uh, if you're gonna err on one side or the other, let's err on the side of transparency, getting people educated, uh, so that there's, that, so that there's less regret when it's all said and done. The turbine companies are keeping at it, boy. They're working north, south, east and west. And, and if they go away seemingly for a little bit, believe me, they'll be back. They're, they're gonna keep hammering and hammering and hammering and just hope people like us get tired of it and, and, uh, no, and, you know, say, what's the use? And, and so, so just because you don't have an actual plan on, in, on paper here, holding off and saying, "We do not need any more public meetings, any more information," is helping them. Because people are, uh, uh, are less and less educated, less able to handle the pressure when that, when that agent is, said, "We need your name on this dotted line." Less, uh, information available. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Dale.
I was cut off earlier. May I finish?
Yeah.
All right. So my question was, you expressed that you would not be in favor of changing the ordinance without, um, more information, and I understand that, and that you would not be open to a meeting to present information or concerns until a project was on the table. Is that, am, am I correct in all of that? Do I have all that straight?
Uh, that's partially correct. Uh, anytime there's new information, I, I'm open and willing, anything that's new. But if it's, uh, a concern about public health that's been talked about in the public health realm, that is not, that, that has been previously discussed, I, I'm not interested in that. I'm interested in new data, new information. Does that clarify that?
It does, to some extent. Um, I guess my, my question, the way it, I felt like it was worded, um, maybe my perspective was off on it, but it just, it felt very much like we have what we have and this is what we're sticking with. And I guess my question then, eh, eh, because it, the discussion kept going back to, until we have a project, there's really no need to, for example, make a clause that would say if the tower, if the tower is taller, we would go a further setback. Um, and, and so the discussion led to, um, interpretation that the ordinance would not be changed unless, until we saw the project and could go from there. And then my question became, so why was the ordinance changed last year before there was a project on the table? That doesn't seem to go together.
Because what we had on the books would have never given landowners who wish to participate a chance to develop wind, in, in my opinion, I think in the opinion of the board at that time.
And there was no ordinance regarding, um, taking down the towers in the future.
I would like to see that. I've never actually on the website, that's not on there. I'd like to read the decommissioning. I've never actually been on the website.
The ordinance.
The ordinance is on. The ordinance is, but it doesn't tell, it's blank, it's blank, it doesn't even say, it's, it's like a, it's like a, like a form letter. It doesn't have the numbers in there yet, so I would like to see, I'd.
Go, go to the auditor's office, get a hard copy and then.
Maybe on the internet, it's just showing up online. It's kinda like a form letter with blanks left on. So I just, interesting, I always wondered about that.
But that, that was a big part of it because some of the earliest concern was, we're gonna have these things to deal with when the wind companies go broke. That was one of the earliest objections that came to wind. And, uh, the decommissioning is our, what we believe, best attempt to guarantee that, uh, we don't have, uh, wind towers that go broke that remain there at the liability of the county or the property owner.
I have a question. Could you, could you post that, that decommission number on it, on your, on your website?
Well, I'll find out. I thought it was on there. Is it not?
There's no, there's no, there's no.
Okay. We'll look into that, Jane. So Ms. Grossman, was that all you needed? Cause you're muted again. Were you done?
Uh, yes. It just, I guess, just to clarify, it, it felt very much like, um, we couldn't change the ordinance until we saw a, a project, but I feel like that's what was done. I do understand the points you brought out, but, um, I don't know. That's just what it sounded like to the common person, I guess, or at least to me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Dale Hall, uh, bad concern, you're not willing to have a public meeting until you have a project on the table. But my concern is, these wind energy companies, they know what your setback is already. So when, when, in, in their acquisition of, of property, they've already got in mind what the setback, and they already know what setback is. So they're gonna come in here with a 1,500-foot setback. So you're, and when they present their plan, you're not willing to have public discussion until the plan's here, but, but my thinking is, it's gonna be too late to change your setback. See what I'm saying?
In reality, and I, and I would refer you to Carl Songson on this issue, Dale. In reality, the, the contracts that have been signed up in the last year and a half under a 1,500-foot setback are bound by that 1,500-foot setback. This is what's happened in Madison County. They changed the setback prior to the project being developed that allowed all those old contracts to be null and void. So they spent all that time, energy and money, and now they can't build it under those, under those setbacks. But I would, I would refer you to Carl on that, cause he, he's a legal expert.
Elections have consequences and policies change. I don't see how that can be so. Please talk to Carl. I mean, I, I'm not a lawyer.
Another concern I've got, you've got the decommission where the, the turbine companies, if they go belly up, they're supposed to take down the turbines. But when you go belly up, you don't have any money. So, I mean, are you making them set aside a reserve, reserve funds adequate to take down all the turbines that they put up if they go belly up?
The, the way it works is, when a project is approved, at the point of approval, then our, at our county expense, we bring an appraiser in to tell us, "Look at these plans. What would it take to remove this turbine built at this spec? What, what's the cost in today's dollars?" And to take that amount by the number of turbines and money is bonded, set aside escrow or something, it's set aside, it contractually, the, uh, company that develops it can't sell that off without that clause being in there. And then every three to five years of some predetermined, uh, agreed upon interval, the three to five would be the zone, then at our expense again, the county would send out that same appraising group to look at those days' dollars, at what it would cost, and adjustments to the escrow would be made at that time as a guard against inflation. And you would do that every three to five years.
I don't think that that's gonna happen.
Why, why wouldn't that happen? How would we force them to do it if they didn't, if they wasn't? What is our implication to force that? I don't know what that is. I'm just curious. If they built and then they, we said, "Well, things have went up 10 times now, how do we make them put more money in escrow?"
It's probably like anything else in life. How, how do you make anybody do anything? If you've got a legally binding contract and somebody reneges on it, you, you end up going to court.
So, so do you guys, will you have proof that those adequate money set aside? Or are you gonna take their word for it? How are you gonna know that the adequate money is set aside?
It, it, there will be clauses for verifiability.
There's clauses, but how are you gonna have proof that, that, that these companies have set aside money for decommission of the, of the turbine?
Those contracts will be audited and, uh.
Audited by who?
I, I can't tell you exactly today who that would be. It could be our internal auditors that we would hire and not, and outstanding auditor. I, I don't know. I don't know the details. We're not there yet.
So we're gonna audit those every year to make sure that they're, that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Well, we would, I'm assuming we would audit it at every, at least at every interval. I can't answer if we would audit it every year.
Well, you better have these plans in place before you let these people come in.
But Dale, I assure you, it will be taken.
And the only, the final comment that I've got, if you remember last spring, last summer, when you and I started talking about these, and I was upfront and honest with you, and I told you that I had done a complete 180 on, on my opinion of wind turbines. And when you had the 1,500-foot setback, I asked you point blank, it says, "Why don't we go 1,800 to 2,000 feet, which still isn't enough in my opinion and the research I've done since then." I asked you, "Why don't we go 1,800, 2,000 feet?" And you know what your comment was back to me?
I don't recall.
I'll tell you what your comment was. If we make it too hard for them, they won't come in. And that told me right then and there, that you didn't give a rascizoo about the landowners in Page County.
On the, on the put money aside thing, I've read other things. They make them put it in a local bank. I don't know what ours is, but locally, so that we could just call the bank, get the money there. We wouldn't have to go out. I don't know if that's somewhere that's in there or not.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
They make them, uh, put the money here in a local bank and we know it's there. I just, I know other people have done that, so we can keep an eye on them.
Anyway, any other comments? All right, I think we are ready then, hearing none, to go to the minutes. Any, uh, on the minutes, by the way, uh, we had, uh, some pretty detailed conversations with the, uh, legal counsel from ISAC, Chrissy Arshberger this week. And, uh, just for clarification, the minutes are indeed a public record, they're the official record. The record, the audio recording is not, um, unless we're in a closed session, then it becomes a different, uh, vehicle. And then, um, the requirements of the minutes, uh, there have been some discussions in the past week that the auditor's office is required to provide us, uh, service for the minutes. That is not correct. Uh, they do that as a courtesy to the board. Some boards, uh, in Iowa actually hire their own help to do that. Um, and then in terms of, uh, to everybody's point here today about.
Do we pay anything towards the clerk or anything of that nature? There's no money towards them?
Yeah. I think, I think one thing that we could, in this room, probably all agree with is that we can look at an issue and have a variety of opinions on that issue, that everybody looks at something from a different lens. We're all, we all carry our own thoughts, bias, whatever. Uh, we're, none of us are immune from that. And I think that that's important to frame when we talk about minutes. When you read the minutes, a requirement of the minutes to, to be, uh, official minutes are, uh, was there a motion made? What are, to record the motions, to record a clear, uh, account of the vote on any items that are voted on. But the discussion points, we've tried, we've kind of pushed hard in the last few years to, to be more complete on the discussion points, so it's clear for people to get a sense that they're reading the minutes and not attended the meeting. However, uh, I think what we're finding is, is that, uh, there can be a comment that seems, seems pretty straightforward, but it may not be interpreted exactly the same way. And so that's why we've gotten into, you know, well, this is what was meant, this is what was, you know, what was intended, and so we've been amending those minutes.
My, my amendments last couple of weeks were based on the audio or video. They weren't based on meant or intended.
Which are?
As I stated last week. On these minutes here, I have no issues this week.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Holmes, second by Armstrong. Any other discussion? All in favor then, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Also moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. Happy day.